Like to call to order the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for January 10, 2024. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus. Commissioner Lestracko.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
I would like to ask our Assistant Township Manager Scott Hutt to lead us in.
I'd just lead you into the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands.
All right, not a heavy agenda, but we have a couple of important items. Before that, we have some housekeeping items. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestracko. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are approved. We can move forward with our agenda before you. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items? All right. We're going to move a few items into the record. Is there a motion to enter into the record the consent items listed in your agenda? Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestracko. Questions or comments? Those items include the police report for the month of December, the VMSC ambulance report for the month of December, the HTMA meeting minutes of November 14, 2023, the North Penn Water Authority meeting minutes of November 28, 2023, and the Hatfield Volunteer Fire Company 2023 report. If that'll call a question, all in favor of moving those into the record, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. They're moved into the record. And we are going to get into committee reports. First is Planning and Zoning Committee, Vice President Rogers.
Thank you. The only item we have tonight is land development application for the Arbor Commercial Development 83 Bethlehem Pike.
Now this project on March 24th, 2024. Multifamily use, four-story building in the commercial district, two parking spaces per dwelling, and no off-street loading and unloading. May 3rd, they submitted their land development application. The 31st of July, they gave their initial presentation to the Planning Commission. And November 21st, presentation and Planning Commission approval. Once the application's submitted, our staff and consultants and outside agencies begin the review of the submission. The time between presentations to the Planning Commission allows the applicant time to revise the plans and resubmit based on the review letters. Right, we have Justin Klee from Bowler Engineering, and some reps from the applicant's team are here to discuss the project.
Or you discuss the project. Somewhat unrelated issue. I believe that some folks are here, residents, which we're thrilled about, by the way, to ask questions or to have comments as it relates to a different construction project that was recently, residents were notified about. Just want everyone to know, this is not the one that was received, people received notification from Polty Homes about. This is a very different construction project. So the guys in the front are wondering, why are you saying this? It's because I know that some of the folks in the back are here to discuss a different construction project, and I did not want people to be confused between those two. That floor is yours.
We need your microphone, actually, on the podium, please.
Hello, Eric Frye from DeChaux Bar on Dooley, here for the applicant. We have Justin Klee, as mentioned, as the engineer, and Sam Carla as representative of the applicant. As was introduced, this is a plan for a 50-unit multi-dwelling facility, which we receive zoning and planning commission recommendations for. We have the review letters, which have gone over by our engineer. The items, any discussed with your engineer, they are, will comply items. And we have a waiver letter, which was amended as of yesterday, which our engineer can go over those, the waivers with you as well. But essentially, it's a 50-unit multi-dwelling with a garage on the first floor, or excuse me, on the basement floor, and then 50 parking spaces on the outside of the building as well. We're here, we can answer any questions that you or the public have, but I have Justin come up and go over the waivers if you would like, or any other review comments.
Justin, do you want to run through the slides first?
Yeah, I was going to ask you to do that.
More of the project. I have all the ones you sent us available.
Let's start with location, because right off the bat, not everyone knows exactly what we're talking about. I saw Bethlehem Pike. Why don't you walk us through where this is at, so that, not just for the commissioners, but really for residents as well, they know what we're looking at.
Absolutely. Could we jump to the area? This is currently an overall parcel that includes three condo units. One condo unit includes the, all located along 309 at the intersection of 309, Broad Street, right next to the Arbor Circle Town Home Development, which is planned. Second condo unit next to this North Penn Self-Storage, which includes access drive, and there's an existing master plan detention basin that's being used by multiple developments in the area. And then the third condo unit, which is furthest to the left and borders 309 and Broad Street, that is the unit in question here. That's what this application is for, that corner lot. So currently, they're proposing, as Eric had mentioned, it's a 50-unit four-story dwelling. It does have a parking garage underneath the building. That parking garage is for members, or for residents only, and it would be a badge-in system that would only be utilized by those who purchase the spaces below the, purchase the spaces within the parking garage. Currently, they're proposing a new access. So the North Penn Self-Storage has an existing access onto 309. As part of this development, they will be shifting it to Broad and 309, consolidating it into one access point. It'll be a right-in, right-out entrance, and tie into that. So just to consolidate that traffic. We are maintaining the detention basin in the top-right corner of the plan. Required with this overall application with the variance is 100 parking spaces. 50 of the parking spaces are included in that parking garage below the apart multifamily building, and then there's 50 on the surface lot themselves. As part of this, we're also including berming along 309 to shelter the, not only the building, but also to lessen the visual from 309. And the same thing forth along the Arbor Circle Town Home. There will be a berm with plantings as well to provide some.
I have the landscaping plan, if you'd like to see.
Sure, yep, let's put that up. Yep, so we provide multiple street trees, part of, all the additional planting. Have a nice visual backdrop for that building. Lots of plants. So we're trying to not only create this nice development, but also beautify it with, to comply with the ordinance.
All the plantings that are currently on this presentation are, don't exist now, and would be planting, plantings by the developer?
That is correct, yes.
But nowhere near what that is?
No, predominantly what's shown on the land.
For that, can you get back to that, Aaron? Yeah, please.
Sure.
So we're on 309. Is there any reason to think that, and I'm not sure what, I'm just asking a question, I don't, I think the answer's probably, is there any reason to think that that much shrubbery along 309 would be a hazard? Once the growth gets larger, if those are full-size trees? Because some of that looks like it's right along the street, the roadway.
Well, the trees were selected by species to not be oversized, to be able to be controlled. And it was reviewed by the landscaping reviewer as well.
Okay.
And Justin, the trees are all behind the sidewalk, correct?
Correct, they're all behind the sidewalk.
All on the backside.
On the backside of the sidewalk.
Yep, yeah, within the property line.
That was going to be my next question, is I was assuming we were going to have sidewalks I didn't see in that landscape, that there was room for it, and I was questioning, well, how close are we getting to the curbs here?
With the different iterations of the different gamble projects along, that came along the way, the connection of the sidewalk from the intersection with Broad down to the pedestrian bridge for the townhouse development, Walnut Creek, I think it's called now, that sidewalk was installed, what, Aaron, about two years ago? Year and a half, two years ago?
COVID.
That was all part of, this corner has all been part of kind of a coordinated effort to get something nice in there. And so the shared drive that's there, that was always considered, you know, as part of whatever was going to go in here. There was a sketch, I think at one point, for like a little couple of strip with some stores and stuff. And that access was always part of this, in addition to getting rid of the existing driveway that goes to the self-storage place. So combining them to the one single access there, as well as providing a bit of a cut-through to get over back to the arbors, if you didn't want to sit at the light, that's always been part of what's going on. So the sidewalk is already in, our landscape architect did consider overhang, things like that, height, width of the trees, in terms of the review.
And I will note, just for sidewalk, we are, there is that, as Brian mentioned, an existing sidewalk along 309, are connecting from that sidewalk north to the Arbor Circle, so that we're, there's going to be a full connection up to that point as well.
Okay, so it'll be surrounded, well, somewhat surrounded by sidewalks.
And the idea, one of the things that was discussed during the earlier parts of the review, was making sure there was easy access for the residents in the building itself to connect to the side, to physically walk to the sidewalk without having to go all the way up or all the way down either side to get over, specifically because the train station is right there.
Right.
So between this part, and then where the Grandview, like outpatient building is, you can walk literally from there to the train station on relatively new sidewalk, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I've interrupted you. And I am going to interrupt you again when we talk about access, and roadways, and people getting on and off 309, and what the access is, proposed access is, at least under Broad Street or Arbor.
Okay, could we go to the site plan, so we could at least? So the proposed access is here, if you have a right. During the design process, we had a couple iterations. This iteration created, set out a few curves to allow, to make sure that there was enough site distance to, for cars exiting parking lot for the. Also then connects across from the step, access point, and that will be a full-access drive as well.
So the drive along 309 is the shared drive that, Brian, you were just talking about, that's with the storage unit, right?
Yeah.
That is a right-turn out-only, I assume?
Right-in, right-out, yep.
Right-in, right-out. And let's talk about the entrance into it, what it is now, and what it's going, if it's going to be changed. Is there going to be a right-turn lane to get into there? Is there a widening of some sort?
There is not, no. And it is currently under review by PennDOT. We're into PennDOT for them to.
Tom, you mean the driveway into this community. It's, right now, there's no widening proposed of Broad Street. It's just the driveway coming in and intersecting with Broad Street itself. But there, and to my knowledge, there's no widening currently proposed on 309.
Correct, that is correct.
Additional lean to slow down and to turn into the.
At this time, no, there's not one proposed. It is, it is under review by PennDOT.
McMahon had, has reviewed this. Don't believe they, don't believe they had recommended any kind of additional, like right-turn lane or any widening, correct?
They did not, no.
Keep in mind, this is a signalized intersection, and it's the access for all the townhomes back there that have been there for.
I thought, for a second, I was thinking there was a light, not a light, at the entrance, there's a light.
Oh, hey, there's a light at the entrance. This intersection has a signal.
Intersection with Line Street?
No, there's no.
Broad Street, yeah.
Yeah, Broad Street.
No, 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 no.
He's talking about the first entrance, if you're going north.
Yep, if you're going north.
Yeah, there's a signal at, to get into the Walnut Creek townhouses. There's a signal there.
Right there, where the cursor is, yep.
Correct, and then, and then there will be the shared right-in, right-out, like 50 or 60 feet north of the current driveway going into the, going into the self-storage place.
Not have widening, no, I knew that. Can you help me with a question? Go right ahead.
You're right-in right now.
That's, that's what I'm questioning. Yeah, that's what I'm questioning now, whether, and the reason we're talking about two lights is presumably there's, that's actually presumably going to, so you won't have a lot of heavy tra, fast-moving traffic between those two lights, but the question that I'm posing to them is, what's the likelihood of having to come, and you're in your right lane, it's going south on 309, now you have to put on your turn signal and enter the, you know, we're going to have arguably residents entering into that entranceway, coming southbound off of 309.
Yeah, and I do want to reiterate, we're not forcing all traffic into the right-in, right-out. That's why there is the cross-access into Broad Street as well, so that if you do need to make a left-hand turn, or want to make a right at the light, that is a possibility as well.
And if I understood you're suggesting correctly, Tom, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but drivers going south on 309 to get into the apartment complex, they'd have to get in at the signal on Broad.
At Broad Street, correct.
Because if you miss that, you got to go down to Walnut Creek, turn around there, and come back down.
And then come back up.
Because with the right-in, right-out, can't make the left from 309.
There is a, there's a mountable curb island that would, that forces traffic to go right.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not sure, we need to get on the same page, because I'm, I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing. You're going south, you're going to turn at the, you're going to turn at the signalized intersection. If you, if you go further south, you're not going to be able to make this left. It's going to be engineered in a way that you'd have to almost do a U-turn. And if you're bold enough to do that on 309, I think you're going to be in trouble, but... So there's already, just so we're all clear, there's already an existing driveway here for the storage facility, right? That's been a functioning business now for five-plus years, right? So that intersection's, or that driveway's going to get improved, right? It's going to now be a right-in, right-out, whereas now it is a full-movement entrance, right? So now you can make the left southbound, you won't be able to in the future, right? Does that make sense? You're not, you're not buying that, or?
I may have more questions about, I ask a lot of questions about entrances, access. It's, have these things, it's a pretty common thing that I ask a lot of questions. They come back again.
Okay.
If not today, then if you go to the next meeting, and there's other people, new people here, can I ask again?
All right. Yeah, so these are a few renderings that were done, just to show, this doesn't show the full magnitude of the landscaping, but it does have a really good, what it would look like at the intersection of Broad and 309.
Oh, right, right.
So I think we have a couple of visuals, if we want to just. So northbound on 309, what. All right, we are including as part of this, a berm to separate the two, which would.
Mr., there's one other point. Townhomes behind here, there, there's roughly 60, 70 units. They were invited to this meeting, they were also invited to every planning commission meeting, which they did. God, you had, you had a dozen maybe from.
They attended.
From that neighborhood for the planning commission. They were very interested in this project, but overall, they have supported. Over the years, they have opposed other uses, such as gas. They, to me, they think this offer from them in 309, that was the feedback we received from, really.
Our fire marshal reviewed and approved it.
And with the residents of the townhome and representatives from their HOA, we, they did ask us to mimic the berm that's currently, so they asked us to mimic the berm, similar to what it looks like on the Grandview side, so we're going to honor that, and as part of that, we were extending some grading onto their site, so it visually looks the same, and it has a similar height going all the way across. So we, we're working with them to make the visual the way they want to see it, to obviously be good neighbors with them as well. Yeah, yeah, I think we're good there. So if it's all right, would you like, do you have any other questions, or would you like me to run through the waivers?
The waivers are in this letter of September 1.
Is that the, Scott, is that the one that's revised from yesterday?
Revised January 9th, it says, yeah.
Yeah, revised.
So all of, all of the waivers that were listed, that are shown in black, are ones that were reviewed and recommended by the planning commission. There were three additional waivers that we added since then, only because through conversations with the homeowner, representatives from the homeowners association, they would require grading across a property line and at a certain slope, to match what was previously proposed on the Grandview Hospital, or the Grandview Outpatient Center. Those are all included in red. So I'll start from the top on the ones that were previously recommended. It was to permit a minimum pipe diameter of six inches in lieu of the required 18. For the most part, we're proposing 15- and 18-inch pipe sizes. We have hydraulic calculations showing that those pipe sizes do work. The six-inch pipes are simply for roof drains, just coming off the building and tying into the larger lines themselves to convey downstream. Second waiver is from Section 242-18B8N, to permit basin side slopes of 3:1 in lieu of the required 4:1. It's just necessary due to the required cross-access that has to stay within the existing condo unit, to provide enough storage to retain that stormwater, so that, just to retain it, to slow it down, to improve the further downstream condition. The third waiver is from Section 242-18B8DD, to permit a pipe invert into a basin zero inches above the basin floor in lieu of the required six inches. This is simply due to, there's not a whole lot of grade differential on the site, and we're trying to pull some water from one side to slow, from one side of the building around to the other, to make sure that water gets slowed down. So instead of coming up six inches, we just need some extra cover over the pipe. The fourth one here, it's from two different sections. It's from Section 242-19A2 and 242-19A3, to permit both excavated and fill slopes to be a slope of 3:1 in lieu of the required 4:1. Similar to the second waiver that was requested, this one is simply just grades on the site to be 3:1 in lieu of 4:1. That's primarily in the areas of the berms, and where the, where the parking garage goes underneath, just because we're in a tight confined space between parking, and we have to get down underneath the building about 10 feet, so just to minimize the impact to the surrounding areas. And then also with the berms that are being proposed on the Grandview outpatient, that is 3:1 slope, so in order to mimic what occurred there, we are also proposing a 3:1 The next waiver is to permit grading closer than five feet and beyond the property line in lieu of the requirement to not grade within five feet of the property line. That is, in all other areas of the site, we comply with this, it's just now that we are working with the representatives from the HOA, we are going to grade across the property line, we'll obtain all necessary easements to construct that grading, but again, as I mentioned before, just to create a similar look as the other, as the other The other one is Section 250-9B5 and 250-10A1, to combine the preliminary and final land development process. It is a relatively straightforward project, and it has been designed with the requirements for both preliminary and final at this point. We are proposing a partial waiver from Section 250-30C, and that's to permit six-inch concrete curb internal to the site, everywhere external. If there needs to be any replacement of curb, that will be eight inches, but internal to the site will be six inches. And then the next would be Section 250-31C, to permit a five-foot concrete sidewalk in lieu of six-foot. Currently out along the perimeter of the site, there is five-foot sidewalk, so we're maintaining that condition and just extending that up, off the Broad Street to meet the Arbor Circle Town Home.
Assistant with what's currently there.
Correct, yes. Next is Section 250-38B1, to permit street trees to be spaced closer or further than the required spacing. We're currently providing the correct number of street trees, it's just due to some underground utilities and the locations of the driveways, we just have to shift the location so it doesn't exactly meet the ordinance's spacing requirements. The next is 250-40U1. This is to permit parking stall size of nine foot by 22 foot for a single parking space, and a nine foot by 18 for a tandem parking space. So that nine foot by 18 foot would be two 18-foot spaces back-to-back, so overall, the space will be nine by 36 for tandem spaces. And that's, those are only within the parking garage. So those parking spaces that are within the parking garage are for purchase only by residents, there wouldn't be any access from the outside public, so you would know going into it that you have two spaces, the tandem spaces would be purchased together. So you wouldn't have two different residents from two different units trying to jockey for position in those spaces. And the width and the length of the parking spaces does comply with the ordinance if it were outdoor parking spaces, but because, we're asking for the waiver because it's within a parking, and, yep. Last couple are Section 250-40U2. This was simply to be able to provide tandem parking spaces. In lieu of providing spaces that are designated for each motor vehicle to proceed to and from the spaces without requiring movement of another, again, as I mentioned, they're from the same unit. It would be similar to any sort of, sort of driveway that anybody could have in a typical townhome where you have two stacked cars. You would just have to jockey around for position if need be. Next section is 250-42E2C, to permit no proposed open space or recreation land in lieu of the requirement to provide open space and recreational land. The applicant is willing to provide a fee in lieu, but there's not a lot, there's not any, there's no space on the site to have any open space dedicated. The next one is 250-64A. Similar as the prior one, it's a different section, but also speaks to not, to not permit offered park and recreation areas in lieu of the requirement to provide 10% of the land offered for dedication. That, again, the applicant is willing to provide a fee in lieu of as well. That, again, the applicant is willing, uh, to provide a fee in lieu of as well. And the, the final, final waiver is from two fifty sixty-seven E one. It's to permit a plan scale of one inch equals thirty feet in lieu of the required one inch equals twenty to one inch equals forty, just to make the site fit correctly on the plan, to make it a nice visual.
Okay. Any, anything else on the presentation?
I don't believe so unless you have any more questions.
Questions from commissioners?
Questions from residents.
Yeah. Yep. It is only, the access is only on the north side of the property.
Justin, when you answer the question, could you just repeat the question?
Yeah, repeat.
Because believe it or not, people watch this.
Okay.
Meeting and, and I will get a call next week that they couldn't hear the questions.
Okay.
Repeat and then answer, please.
Absolutely. Uh, so the question was, will there be access on both the north and south side of the building for the garage access? And the answer is that it is only located on the north side of the building. Uh, for the parking lot, yes, there is access on both the, uh, I guess technically it would be the southeast side. Yes. Both sides. Uh, yes, the, yes, there will be an HOA associated with it, a management slash management company. I would have to have the applicant speak to that.
On that note, Sam, when you're going up there, it might be good to talk about, uh, important for the community to understand how that's going to be set up or Eric or.
Now, while Sam's walking up, the first question was, just, just for the record, was, will people who live in Arbor Circle be able to use the driveway if they're heading northbound on three oh nine? And the answer was yes, they can, they can. Quad tree with, and avoid. That was the first, uh, question. Um, and now the question is, HOA or condo units, or how, how are we handling maintaining this property in the future?
My name is Sam Carlin with Polty Homes. This is a fifty unit condo building, so these are for sale units. There will be a condo association established to manage the, the property itself as well as any maintenance associated with the building. Uh, as far as pricing, these are, uh, units that are range anywhere from, uh, nine hundred and eighty square feet to sixteen hundred square feet. So they're going to start probably in the high three hundreds and, and, uh, go up from there. Company is headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. Yes, Tulsi.
Dave, can you go to the microphone? We, for minutes and for people that are watching, they, they should be hearing what you're saying. Please.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned about your safety record. Uh, the OSHA establishment search page, uh, shows twelve violations since two thousand nineteen. I haven't dug into them to see what they're all about, but some of them are considered serious. And there's another, uh, company here that does, uh, tracking. And, and I can't speak to the validity of it, but according to Good Jobs First, your company has had four consumer product related offenses, forty-three environmental related offenses, three employment related offenses, twenty-two safety related offenses, and one miscellaneous that total something like nine million dollars in fines and penalties. Can you address some of that?
Not really sure how that relates to the land development aspect of this project. I could tell you, I, I can't speak to all those, um, items that you just brought up. I could tell you our division, which is run out of Bridgewater, New Jersey. Um, I'm not sure if any of those items are listed through, uh, our division in Bridgewater. So I, I really can't speak to most of those issues you brought up. For sale, you, each person will own your condo unit. They're for sale. Correct.
Any other questions? That's one of the waivers that they're proposing, right? Is that, uh, we have an ordinance that requires a certain amount set aside for certain things. And there are two waivers, one related to open space, another one to recreational use. And that, the, one of the, the two wa, two of the waivers that they're requesting, uh, are, uh, so are related to those two. And they're proposing what they do, depending on the size of the property and the size of the construction, it would be, they would set it aside or they would, what they normally propose is a fee in lieu of, and I'm not sure what that, what that, what that, I mean, that's money is what it is, but I'm not sure what that amounts to, but that's part of the two of the waivers, yes.
Well, and the reason for, and you may get a playground. So essentially what we do is we give that money to the township and then they can pull that from several developments and build a better playground at a place where it makes sense.
Yeah.
Here it really doesn't make sense to put a playground in the middle of this thing and have people driving to a small area of open space. They can acquire open space or put a playground in existing open space where people are already going to. So that, that decision is then is left up to the supervisors. They just have our funds donated to that.
Any other questions? All right. Anything else on the presentation?
Recommendation for more, or moving on to the next step, not recommendations.
Yeah. So there's clarity. We're not voting on this tonight.
Correct. Yep.
This is, this is their presentation to us and to you as residents. And then what we typically do is allow them to get done to the next agenda, which is from now. And then, um, they would be required to field more questions from us, more questions from residents. And then at the earliest, then that would be the earliest a decision would be made. Tonight is presentation.
And at that point too, commissioners, there'll, there'll be a resolution drafted by the solicitor's office, which will actually quantify a lot of the things that we've been discussing tonight.
Right.
So each, each waiver, um, each aspect of, of the land development approval outlined specifically in a resolution, which is a public document, and will be in the packet for everyone to see.
Hold up just a second. Could you go up to the mic? I'm really having problems hearing you.
So we witnessed the construction of some three hundred and sixty homes down the street from our house. Um, and the kids in the neighborhood ran free range over your construction site. Um, they were playing literally on large concrete cylinder. I'm assuming it's for some sort of underground plumbing, um, which placed on soft ground could roll or shift, could have crushed them to death. Um, the, the dirt pile, I'm not sure that that was sloped properly. Kids were playing on that constantly. That could collapse and kill somebody. Um, and I saw lots of guys on roofs with, with no fall protection at all. So when you look at that, it, it really, it really begs the question, does your company know how to operate safely? And should you be building homes in Hatfield?
Any other questions, comments? All right. So tonight is step one, presentation, right? Step two is, um, next agenda, two weeks from now, that would be formal presentation. And as our township manager mentioned, uh, there's these, they have work to do over the next couple of weeks to actually draft what this would all look like. And for example, then we would learn what the fee in lieu of looks like. By the way, we, when we do accept those scenarios, what we typically do then is we say, okay, well then let's, we look at, uh, things like the Clements Development, right? We're working on the, the, developing the Clements Park. There's opportunities there. That's not a, that's not a deciding factor, like the deciding factor, but it's helpful to know that if it's a plan that doesn't allow for open space, at least we're going to have the opportunity to use some funds that are donated towards like developing Clements Park, which could, which is a much larger park, which is kind of, uh, you know, it's, it's more in a suburban area as opposed to along three oh nine.
President, Mr. President, can I just elaborate a few, I'll just give a few concrete examples. You, you said it perfectly. Clements Park is a great example. It's about to be expanded. It's quadrupled in size. Um, an inclusive playground is going to be installed. All the costs associated with that project came from projects like this. Rick's Trail that we all love was a three hundred thousand plus project that no taxpayer money went toward because of projects like this. President said, uh, funds go to the township, township decides then where you can create the biggest impact for the community. Try to leverage those and do the best you can. We've, we've received a lot of grants over the years using those as matches. Clements Park being an example of that. Several other ones, but that just gives you an example of where. It's all, it's all a public process. Every penny we spend is, is publicly noted and discussed.
That's a good question. You said, okay, if they give you the fee in lieu of, where does it go? I wanted you to know where it went. That's, that's what the things that we do with it. Okay. All right. We'll see you back in two weeks. And residents, if you have questions in the interim, you can always reach out to the staff or to your commissioner. All right. Bob, anything else under planning and zoning?
Thank you.
Um, Aaron, do we have, I don't think we have committee reports for the remaining, oh, I'm sorry. Park and rec report? Absolutely. Commissioner Lestraco.
Okay, thank you. So for the parks rec report, um, you may have seen holiday lights competition. Um, Hatfield has, was filled with lots of decor, decorations and holiday cheer in two thousand and twenty-three. All of our holiday lights contestants did a great job. So I want to just give you the addresses of the winners. So for most colorful, fourteen sixteen Downing Drive, most creative sixteen fifty-eight latch string, most traditional classic thirteen sixty-eight Downing Drive. And people's choice was thirty-three Blaine Avenue. Um, for this year, get fit classes, um, we have lots of options. So you can also see these on our website. Uh, winter fitness classes will include Zumba Sundays at nine AM. Uh, the winter session is January, the first winter session, January twenty-first to February twenty-fifth. And the second winter session will be March tenth to April twenty-first with no class on March thirty-first. For the remix class, that's Mondays, seven PM. Winter session one will be January twenty-second to February twenty-sixth. And winter session two will be March eleventh to April twenty-second. Uh, for yoga, we're going to have that Thursday, seven PM. The first winter session begins January twenty-fifth to February twenty-ninth. And there'll be, uh, no class on the first and eighth of February. Uh, winter session two will be March fourteenth till April twenty-fifth with no class on March twenty-eighth and April fourth. So, um, check out those classes. Thank you.
Great. Good report. Um, do we have any other? I don't, do we, Aaron, do we have any other committee reports?
Commissioner Andrews will give a finance report possibly, uh, in two weeks about, um, a, a, a late, uh, on rating, uh, that we just had received today, which is good news and we'll let Commissioner.
Okay. All right. So we, we're going to jump into the township manager's report then.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. I have some good news I want to share with the community, especially, uh, for homes that have been waiting for this moment for rec four years.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred years? It feels like a thousand years if you're living it. Thank God. Thank God. You are Rick. So it rained a lot here yesterday, uh, commissioners, you're, you're well aware of that. Uh, for many of us, it's, it's a nuisance, um, traveling throughout the town. It's inconvenient. Ten, chief, ten, fifteen roads closed last night roughly. Uh, for these four families though, it's, it's a night many years now. Um, they've experienced significant flooding, uh, devastating losses to their homes throughout the years. Out their entire first floor, um, that, that, all their belongings. Commissioners have been aware of this and have given staff full support and direction to do whatever we can to, to help them. Um, so we began this formal process. I looked through some of my notes, Rick. I was at your house in twenty-one, uh, after hurricane. Getting them all mixed up, Isaiah's, then Ida, there was, everyone remembers those few storms we had throughout those years. And the process working with FEMA at that point to secure funding to acquire the four properties. And as of right before Christmas, we received finally an official letter from FEMA saying that the township has received one point six million dollars to acquire four homes. Uh, and, and finally give Rick and his neighbors, uh, peace of mind and some, some freedom to, to move on. Uh, we hope, we hope you stay in Hatfield, um, just not in a flood zone. And I know you, I know you prefer it. Buy a condo, possibly if that's what you want to do, Rick. Um, so two, three weeks ago, we finally received the notes from FEMA, the award. Next week, we have a meeting with FEMA, uh, just going through the process, which is why you haven't heard from me yet, Rick, and the other neighbors, just because I want to have all the answers for when we get together as far as timeframe. But we finally have the commitment. We'll be in a position to write a check, uh, for an appraised value for these four homes. Um, I don't want to give a timeframe because every time I do, I let you down. Uh, but hopefully soon because, again, three years of, this is going to happen in the next month. I think I said that too many times. Um, but it, but it is finally happening. So the final plan is, um, to acquire all four of these homes. Uh, again, these homes would not be able to be built today. These homes wouldn't be built, been, been able to have been built anytime after the nineteen seventies when the flood plain ordinance went into effect. These are homes that were built prior to current regulations that, that prevent these things from happening. Uh, so the, the plan is to acquire all four. We'll work with the homeowners as far as timeframe and flexibility to make sure they find a, a suitable place. Um, and then the homes will be demolished and, uh, bosses, um, hopefully all four stay in the town. Uh, would certainly like that, but, uh, th, these are where the boats come from, from Colmer Fire and Hatfield Fire to rescue these neighbors, uh, in big storms. So we'll prevent that risk from our emergency responders having to deal with as well. So it's a, it's a big deal. Um, it may not have the, the global impact on the entire community, but it will really change the lives of four taxpayers here in Hatfield that we've been working closely with for, for many years and, and dealing with a lot of, a lot of, uh, agony, um, am, among some of them in particular that have had to deal with this. Get your patience, Rick, dealing with the, the FEMA process is not pleasant. That's, that's why air at this point, but, uh, air before either. Hey, I wasn't aware of that. All right. Hey, I can understand. So well, she'll have a new place to play and, and I'll be in touch, Rick, over the next two weeks. I'll send you and your wife a note and we'll get together and we'll talk details. And I'll do that for the other three home. Fighting and, um, we'll obviously be flexible with timing for finding a new home. And interest rates have gone like this throughout the four years of us waiting. Go ahead, Rick. FEMA funds that comes through Pima. We deal with Pima directly now. I, this is ninety percent covered by the federal government, ten percent covered by the state government. And what's good about the funding commissioners is all the cost we put into this, time from our consultants. Brian was a significant help. Um, Brian was a significant help. A lot of engineering that went into the certifying certain elevations. All the costs, this is, project will be reimbursed fully. Us for all the consultant's time, cost for all the legal time for the acquisitions of the four, cost of MO, cost of retrofit, every penny that we spend on this project will have come. Good as it gets. It just took a long time. I hope, we didn't think it would be, it rained a lot this winter. We can't catch a break. Usually this is the time that we don't have to worry about the flooding, but happening.
Great news. And as much as Aaron gives the commissioners credit for things that really him and his staff do, this and one in particular, he, him and his staff deserve all the credit. So I mean, we have, I know that we've, you've come to some meetings and we've, we know exactly the different, you know, the difficulties with all the four properties. But Aaron and the staff have done a fantastic job. FEMA is not very fast, which I'm sure you're an expert in now, but we're really thrilled that we're able to help out in this regard, so. Well, that means you like the place, which is good, right? You won't have to worry about rain anymore, and that's a good thing. That's a, and none of those properties will. That's a really good thing. None of those families, I should say. Right?
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Solicitor, Mr. Solicitor. Solicitor, citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments on agenda or otherwise? Yep. Katie?
Good evening. My name is Katie Schutz. I live at 588 Grapevine Drive. I'm a 20-year resident of Hatfield Township, and I'm here tonight to share my concern over potential development of the 42-acre cornfield at 336 Orvilla Road. This property is adjacent to Leon Drive and abuts the Del Webb community being constructed on 40-foot road. I understand the same builder that developed Del Webb, and I think the same builder that was just here speaking earlier has already purchased these 42 acres and plans to build, from what I hear, over 80 single-family homes. They'll be holding a neighborhood information meeting at the Del Webb Clubhouse on February 5th at 7:30 to discuss the proposed development with Hatfield residents. So I encourage everybody to come out and attend. When I moved to Hatfield in 2002, much of it was semi-rural with lots of open fields. Those fields have slowly given way to shopping centers, fast food restaurants, and housing developments. Every one of these developments erodes the small-town charm of Hatfield. Furthermore, our roads, schools, and wildlife simply cannot handle further development. In 2005, Hatfield Township published an open space plan where several properties were evaluated as potential acquisitions to create permanent open space. This 42-acre lot was identified in that report as a high-priority acquisition site to, quote, "address the unmet open space needs within this portion of the township that could be developed for athletic fields, passive recreation uses, to serve the southern half of the township." In a Facebook post yesterday on this topic, the admin, who I'm not sure if that was you, Aaron, indicated that this property is priority six, but we haven't moved past priority one or two. And incidentally, right, I want to go back to the unmet need of open space within this portion of the township. Having raised my kids, who are 19 and 16, they can't get to a park or a playground without going on a road because there's not enough sidewalks, right? So we're limited to having to drive somewhere. I won't let them ride their bike out of the neighborhood because people drive like crazy people, right? So my question to you is, and I think you answered one of them earlier, what is the plan to protect the remaining parcels from further development? And how is the acquisition of property to create open space funded? And the question I think that was answered was what percentage of the 42 acres would the builder be required to maintain as open space? And I think that was 10%. Is that what I heard?
That's the mandatory, that's the ordinance.
Depends what they propose.
But the ordinance is 10%, right?
It depends what they apply for.
Okay. And what constitutes open space? Does it have to be wooded? Is it grassy? Can it be a retention basin? Like what, oops, what constitutes open space? Amphibasen, okay. So then I'll just rephrase my two, first two questions. What's the plan to protect the remaining parcels from further development that were in that open space plan? And how is the acquisition of that property to create open space funded? Thank you.
It's a good question, open space in particular. So we have identified the, kind of the top two, the one in particular, and I, can I?
We're working.
Yeah, there's, there's some, I guess I should be hesitant to say that just because when there's, when there's property, possibilities of acquisition, there's hesitancy on my part in particular and the board's part that maybe we shouldn't, we can only make certain things public. But having said that, there is a, this is not a, this is not a top, this is, this is a topic that is regularly discussed, I can tell you that. That's probably the best way I can put it.
Also is some open space.
Right.
That'd be like 15 acres.
Yeah, over, yeah, about 15, actually. 15 next to Ralph's Corner, open space.
And as it relates to this project in particular, and I don't want to say that, you know, we don't know, but at that, at this juncture, we actually don't know, meaning as commissioners or even as the township, because no application has been put in. Their obligation after they purchased that property was, actually, I'm not sure if it's an obligation, but it was a recommendation to reach out to the, to the residents now to start to have these meetings. There's no plan that's presented to us. There's nothing for us to act on. There is no, and Aaron, you'll correct me. I have no expectation that even if they put in an application, that the application would come to this board anytime soon. Sometimes these application takes, could take year, a year or more, depending on what they want to propose, what, what they have to do in order to build it. It's got to go through a lot of different hoops before it gets to us. But what we're pleased about is that they reached out and they already set up a meeting so that residents, and I live in the ward, it's my ward. I live not far from the Schutz's house as well. So that we're, we know about it early, which is good. At least we're pleased that's happened, that part of the process happened.
They are not obligated to meet with the neighbor. And just move right through the process.
Dave, yes?
Quadrupled the size of Clemens Park within the last five years.
Right.
That would be open space. 15 acres acquired on the other side of Ralph's Corner as part of the reasoning. Since we've actually written a check for open space was to develop Brad's property, which is now Frick's Trail off of Line Lexington, 2012. One thing to keep in mind about open space, in 2008, there was a referendum put on the Hatfield residents and asked if people would accept the tax to pay and acquire all the open space, and it failed. It was one of the few referendums in the state of Pennsylvania that failed for open space. So that handcuffed the commissioners fine funding to acquire. We're also obligated to pay at appraised value, where Pulte Homes is a public company that can offer much higher than what a township's at a competitive disadvantage.
Any other questions, comments? Yes. So the, so the question, just so, because we're, rather than have you go up to the podium, is there are, I'll call them stubs at the, and during, throughout the neighborhood there that were created, I don't know, you know, 30, 40 years ago, for whatever reason, I guess maybe possibility of a connection. So the question is, who is the decision maker or the determinative fact? What's the determinative factor as it relates to whether that neighborhood would connect to the existing neighborhood? And without having any idea what their plans would be, it would be total speculation on my part to tell you that I know one way or the other. Overall, the plan has to go through the plan development process and then ultimately come through the board. So that would just be one of many considerations after they file their application. After they file their application, we're, I mean, we'd have a much better sense of what their plan is, for sure, whether it would be a connection or whether it would not be. That would be, yeah.
The applicant will design what they think is best. And then they, Brian, our engineer, then township ordinances. They're going to propose what they think first, and then we go through the process of, well, here's what you need. Just so you're aware, too, after an application is submitted, there'll be a planning commission meeting, which is in this public meeting. We're not required to, but we will in this situation because action into a neighborhood. We'll send a letter to every resident connected into that area of Leon and Sourwood and Grapevine to make you aware that there's a meeting. So come out, you'll be able to see the plans, you'll be able to ask as many questions as you want. The applicant will be here, planning commission will be here, all the consultants that review it. We have a traffic engineer that will look at it, a landscape architect that will look at it, our municipal engineer, Brian, will look at it to make.
Let me, let me, yeah. That's one of the things that the traffic engineer advises us about. Not only what their plan, what the proposed plan would do and what it would look like, but then also if there's alternatives, then our traffic engineer proposes to us alternatives that we would consider. That's just generally the process. Yes, sir?
There already has been. It's submitted, that's a state road, so that gets submitted to Pendott.
He said it's pending and it's a go.
Remember, right now, that's a full movement intersection. Right now, that's a full movement. You can make a left southbound, right? So they're going to eliminate the southbound. That's, that was Pendott, state road. We have no, no jurisdiction. Yes. Yes. Welsh. Yes. You know, you notice a theme. Orvilla, 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 right? State road, state road, state road. So Orvilla Cow Path was the first one. Commissioners fixed it. Orvilla and Welsh. We now have a design. We have an application submitted for funding to fix it, to pay for the construction. Commissioners did that last year. Our next one is Orvilla Cawful, which we have a preliminary design. We're working with the property owners because we're going to need some right-of-way, which are sensitive conversations and take some time. But as we're getting construction money for Welsh Orvilla, we're getting, moving forward with Orvilla Cawful. Orvilla is the, of all headaches, but we're working on it.
Any other questions or comments?
I think the other thing is they did a pretty 09.
All right. If there's no other comments, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestraico.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or concerns? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hang on, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming out, folks.